This is just loading the livestream. Okay, May. Meeting is all yours.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Mayor and Board of Trustees for the Village of Woodridge on this Thursday, November 5th, 2020. We call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM and ask our clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Hendricks.
Present.
Trustee Blair.
Present.
Trustee Martinez.
Present.
Trustee Abbott.
Present.
Trustee Cruzack.
Present.
Trustee Page.
Present.
Madam Mayor.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. If you would, please join us in a moment of silence and in dedicating tonight's meeting in honor of our Woodridge VFW Post 1578 as we recognize Veterans Day. We thank all of our veterans for their service and all their incredible great works that they do to help veterans and our community. We are truly blessed. We thank you all so very much. And a special shout out this evening to Mr. Gene Swatell. Mr. Swatell has lived in Woodridge for over 50 years, and I heard he is celebrating a very special day today. Mr. Swatell, on behalf of the Village of Woodridge and all of us on the Village Board, we send our very best wishes for a happy, special celebration, all in your honor. Please enjoy. If we could together, please say the Pledge of Allegiance right at our seats that are, if you want to stand, you can, but I think it would be good that we go ahead and take a moment and then say the Pledge Allegiance together. Pledge Allegiance. Thank you. We do have a few special recognition items before the board this evening. First up is the resolution, and let me just talk about this for a moment, Resolution 2020-86, which is a resolution of the Mayor and Board of Trustees for the Village of Woodridge. We are commending publicly Sam Banda as employee of the quarter, third quarter 2020. The village has an employee recognition program. Each quarter, an employee receives recognition by his or her employee peers. And Sam Banda has been selected as our employee of the quarter, this third quarter 2020. We congratulate Sam, and now I'm going to ask, please, for a motion to approve this resolution honoring Sam Banda.
So move Trustee Page.
Thank you, Trustee Page, and a second, please.
Second, Trustee Blair.
Thank you, Trustee Blair. If I could, please ask for the clerk to call the roll.
Trustee Blair.
Aye.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Trustee Cruzack.
Aye.
Trustee Page.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Thank you very much. We do want to just recognize Sam and thank him for all his outstanding service throughout the village. He has been just a wonderful person to work with, so talented and very kind. He heads up our IT department, and we cannot thank him for all of his great works. And Sam, if you're on with us, congratulations from all of us.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the kind words. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. There you are. How are you? Do you want to say a few words?
Uh, well. For 23 years, I don't know if there's anything else to say, except, hey, great working for the village.
Great. Well, thank you, and thank you for all your 23 years, and here's to another 23 years.
That's gonna be a heartbeat. Thank you.
All right.
Yes, to make some comments?
Yes, please. Thank you so much.
I have some comments for, about Sam.
Oh, thank you.
My distinct pleasure to recognize Sam Banda as our employee of the quarter for the third quarter. Sam was nominated by Jim Hoff for his outstanding efforts to deploy technology to support a remote work solution during this stay-at-home quarter or order last spring. Jim noted Sam's intergovernmental effort, saying that Sam was quick to respond to messages requesting tech support to Woodridge School District 68 for their junior high production ceremony, promotion ceremony, I'm sorry. The cable company wire was caught and the video would not upload properly for it to be aired on WCTV. Sam stayed up until midnight on a Friday night to help resolve the issue and ensure that the junior high families could watch the promotion ceremony the next day. He came up with a solution to connect remotely directly into the WCTV studio computer to properly load the video. I don't know if that was partially because Sam's kids are, Jeff Jefferson is his own daughter, for three, his three kids, but that is just absolutely what Sam would do for anyone. Personally, I can't overstate the effort and ingenuity that Sam displayed in responding to our pivot to work-from-home environment last spring. In those first few weeks of March, things were changing at a hyperspeed. We ourselves, as a leadership team, hadn't even decided yet, hadn't committed yet to a remote work solution. Sam was already putting a plan into place to make it happen. He worked for nearly four straight days devising a solution and deploying it across our workforce. He identified, learned, and deployed a new technology that we will out, I'm sorry, different technologies that we all now take for granted, like the Zoom meeting, right? We didn't, we had never used Zoom. Sam learned it all and showed us how to use it. And he really made the remote transition seamless. He spent endless hours supporting employees and troubleshooting problems to make sure that they could get their work completed. And as the mayor noted, Sam's been with us for over 23 years, and yet he comes to work with the same energy and enthusiasm and positive spirit he did two decades ago. He constantly looks for opportunities to improve our technology and reduce our costs. And as Jim Hoff stated in his nomination, Sam is an outstanding team member. Congratulations to Sam on this worthy award.
Thank you very much to our Assistant Village Administrator Halleck for that. And again, congratulations, Sam, to you. So well deserved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is a motion to accept the recommendations for the community recognition program. Each year, select businesses and individuals are recognized for their outstanding contributions to the Village of Woodridge. This category includes advisory boards, commission members, employees, associations, and businesses. So we are presenting this to the Village Board and asking for a motion to accept the recommendations for 2020.
So move Trustee Cruzack.
Thank you, Trustee Cruzack, and a second, please.
Second, Trustee Martinez.
Thank you, Trustee Martinez. All those in favor, please sign aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. And now, we would like to have everyone watch a short video. It is our 2020 tribute to our Woodridge VFW Post 1578 in honor of Veterans Day. If you'll give us just a moment. Thank you very much to Jim Hoff for producing that for us. We cannot thank our VFW post and all of our veterans for their excellent works throughout our community and all they do for veterans. We are truly blessed, and we do thank them very much for all that they bring to our community and all their service. Thank you very much, Phil, for playing that for us this evening. We will now move to comments from the public. This portion of the agenda, we will pause now to acknowledge any written public comments that have been received prior to our meeting and enter those into the public record, please. Going to ask staff if we've received any written public comment.
Mayor Cunningham, we have none.
Okay, thank you so much. And nothing coming from online this evening as well?
Uh, no, May. There is nobody joining us to provide comment this evening.
Okay, thank you very much, Phil. We will now go ahead and provide members of the public an opportunity to provide any comments, particularly items that do not appear on tonight's board agenda. We'll give it just a moment. And Phil checking in with you and Administrator Stonich.
Nothing this time.
No comments, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Now, we'll also just give it a moment and ask if there's anyone that desires to make a public comment on an item that does appear on this evening's agenda, please. Hey, I'm not seeing anything, so thank you all very much for being here this evening. And we'll go ahead and now move to our omnibus. If I could, please, have a motion to accept items A through C.
So move Trustee Page.
Thank you, Trustee Page, and a second, please.
Second, Trustee Cruzack.
Thank you, Trustee Cruzack. Administrator Stonich, would you just please review our omnibus for us this evening?
Thank you, Mayor Cunningham. Members of the board, good evening. Item A is board minutes, previous board minutes, pardon me, for the September 29th, 2020 meeting, and then also the October 15th, 2020 meeting. And then the last item, C, are the accounts payable registers for October 9th and October 16th, 2020.
Thank you very much. Going to ask our clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Trustee Cruzack.
Aye.
Trustee Page.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Blair.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Thank you very much. Under presentation of communication, the mayor's report, I'm going to bypass my report this evening and update everyone at our next board meeting. So I'm going to now move right to Administrator Stonich's report, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Cunningham. The first item, A, this evening, is determination of the 2020 proposed property tax levy, and this is a compliance with the Truth in Taxation Act. And we're going to start off with the village's tax levy first.
Okay.
And staff is going to have here just a very brief presentation.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees. Tonight is a determination, as Al had, Administrator Stonich has pointed out, the 2020 levy determination for both the village and the library. These are 2020 tax levies that will be collected in 2021. Next slide, please. I'm going to present the village's tax levy, and then Library Director Pam DuBey will be presenting the library's levy. Next slide, please. So at the board workshop in September, the board decided to increase the levy by only capturing the new construction coming onto the tax rolls. So that's what I'm going to be presenting here tonight. Adding in the new construction, which is actually from 2019, actual new construction that was brought on, the tax rolls increases our EAV by about 1.6%. And this allows for a 1.6% increase in our levy in order to capture that new growth. This actually results in the levy this year in 2020 proposed to be $3,301,350. This is actually an increase of $51,350 from last year's tax levy. This is the third year that a majority of the board is in favor of increasing the EAV by only that new construction growth. This is the second year that 100% of the levy is needed for police pensions, and that is not sufficient enough to cover the full amount that the village has to fund next year, short about 1.5 million, in which we'll have to use other revenues to make up the difference. And then, as such, we will not have any corporate levy for operations. Next slide, please. So based on the proposed levy of 3.3 million and expected overall growth in the village's EAV of 4.5%, this means that the village's tax rate will be .2450. And if we use that tax rate, this chart will show the amount of property taxes paid to the village for every $100,000 of market value for a homeowner. So if your property is worth $300,000, you would pay approximately $245 in property taxes to the village for the 2020 levy. Keep in mind that this does not include exemptions, which would lower the amount. Also note that this amount is based on staff's estimation of 4.5% of an EAV increase. We will actually know what the townships determine later on, but this, after pulling the townships, they do believe that they're right around 4.5%, so we do believe this to be pretty accurate. This new rate of .2450 is lower than last year's rate of .2535. So as such, this reduces, represents a reduction in property taxes paid to the village of about $2.85 for every $100,000 in property value. And I'll explain that a little bit more on the next slide, please. So I had this slide this year as another way to illustrate how market value plays into a tax bill. The example you see here is someone who has $100,000 in home value last year in 2019. In four different ways, that home value has changed in 2020. The first three rows are changes in home value. So the scenarios you're looking at, you're looking at from negative 5% to plus 5%. The last four rows are the resulting changes in the tax bill from 2019 to 2020 that we're presenting today. We thought this slide would be very tangible so that we can further explain, not only to ourselves, but also to a homeowner, how the market value of a home does play into the tax that they would pay the village. So this is something that we can even, it's kind of a cheat sheet, if you will, to kind of understand the tax levy and what it does tangibly to a homeowner. Next slide, please. As we kind of show, every year, we use this dollar bill graphic. It's a good way of illustrating the property taxes that are paid by a homeowner to various taxing bodies. For every dollar that a property owner pays in property taxes, only about 4 cents goes to the village and about 5 cents to the library. As you can see, a majority does support our schools. Next slide, please. Currently, the village has three bond issues, and the debt service payments on these total about $1.7 million. These will be paid using revenues other than property taxes. So we are going to abate or not levy a tax on them. By doing so, this does decrease the tax burden by property for four property owners in the village. Next slide, please. The village does have currently three special service areas that we levy property taxes for, all of which are for stormwater improvements in those specific areas. Next slide, please. Special Service Area 1, or also known as Seven Bridges, was established in 1989. The levy request for 2020 is $39,520. This is a tax rate of .03. And for a home value of around $600,000, this does mean that that property owner would pay $60 in property tax to the village. For Special Service Area Number 3, Richfield Place, established in 1997, the levy request is $7,170. The tax rate is .16, and thus resulting in a homeowner paying $266 where a market value of the home is 500,000. Next slide, please. Lastly, we have Special Service Area Number 5, Timbers Edge, established in 2014. The levy request is $8,345, tax rate of .03 again. And then, for a $500,000 home, this would be a $50 tax bill to the village in property taxes. Next slide, please. So before we move on, I just wanted to ask if there's any questions that anybody might have on what I've covered so far before I turn it over to the library and Pam. All right. So next steps, I should say, next steps before I turn it over to Pam, I just want to mention that public comment, the 2020 levies will be held on December 3rd, when we would also be passing the levies and the abatements the same evening. So I'll now turn it over to Library Director Pam DuBey.
Thank you. Thank you, Darren. I'm Pam DuBey, Library Director. I'll be presenting our levy. Next slide. So the total levy is $3,847,414. This is a flat levy. There is no increase from last year's levy. This was approved at the Board of Trustees, the Library Board of Trustees, September 16th Board Meeting. The breakdown of the levy is $3,597,414 for the general fund, $140,000 for IMRF, and $110,000 for FICA. Next slide. And this shows how the library gets their money. As you'll see, 46,000, 46% of our levy and of our budget is from property taxes, and 4% is from other revenue sources. These are things like overdue fines, money from copiers, some interest we have, but the majority of our budget does come from property taxes. Next slide. And this is our total expenditures. So in our budget, 63% of our budget goes to personnel as the library is a very heavy service organization. 14% is programs, materials, commodities, 6% professional services, 7% repair and maintenance, and 10% is others such as technology and other expenses that are too small to warrant breaking down into this. So are there any questions?
Asking if the board members have any questions for Executive Director DuBey.
Okay, that's, well, that's the conclusion of my presentation, if there are no questions.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that so much. Administrator Stonich.
That concludes staff's presentation here, unless there are any questions. Otherwise, I believe we call a vote on item A.
Seeing no questions. So what we're looking for is a motion to approve determination of the 2020 proposed property tax levy in compliance with the Truth in Taxation Act. Village levy is first, please.
So moved, Trustee Hendricks.
Thank you, Trustee Hendricks, and a second, please.
Second, Trustee Blair.
Trustee Blair, any discussion on this item? Seeing none, if our clerk would please call the roll.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Trustee Cruzack.
Aye.
Trustee Page.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Blair.
Aye.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Thank you. Item 2 is the determination of the 2020 proposed property tax levy in compliance with Truth in Taxation Act, and this would be the library levy. Asking for a motion to approve the determination for the library levy.
So move Trustee Page.
Thank you, Trustee Page, and a second, please.
Second, Trustee Martinez.
Thank you, Trustee Martinez. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, if our clerk would please call the roll.
Trustee Cruzack.
Aye.
Trustee Page.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Blair.
Aye.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Next is the determination of the 2020 proposed property tax levy. Administrator Stonich, do you want to read these, or should I keep going on and?
I think we just take, we just take one at a time, and they were covered in Darren's presentation.
Okay, sounds great. So this one would be the determination for the 2020 proposed property tax levy in compliance with truth and taxation, and this is SSA Number 1 for Seven Bridges, asking for a motion to approve the determination for SSA 1, Seven Bridges.
So move Trustee Page.
Thank you, Trustee Page, and I heard a second coming in.
Second, Trustee Cruzack.
Thank you, Trustee Cruzack. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, if our clerk would call the roll, please.
Trustee Page.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Blair.
Aye.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Trustee Cruzack.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Thank you. The next is the determination of the 2020 proposed tax levy in compliance with the Truth in Taxation Act for Special Service Area Number 3, Richfield Place. Looking for a motion to approve the determination for SSA Number 3, Richfield Place, please.
So move Trustee Blair.
Trustee Blair, and a second, please.
Second, Trustee Hendricks.
Thank you, Trustee Hendricks. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, if our clerk would call the roll.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Blair.
Aye.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Trustee Cruzack.
Aye.
Trustee Page. Recall, Trustee Page. Muted.
Aye, sorry.
Motion's approved.
All right. Thank you, everyone. One more. Next is the determination of the 2020 proposed property tax levy in compliance with the Truth in Taxation Act for Special Service Area Number 5, Timbers Edge. Looking for a motion to approve determination of the 2020 proposed property tax levy for SSA Number 5, Timbers Edge, please.
I'll move, Trustee Martinez.
Thank you, Trustee Martinez, in a second, please.
Second, Trustee Hendricks.
Thank you, Trustee Hendricks. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, if I could, please ask the clerk to call the roll.
Trustee Blair.
Aye.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Trustee Crusek.
Aye.
Trustee Page.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Next item F is Resolution 2020-87. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk to execute a certain agreement for engineering, professional services between the village of Woodridge and Thomas Engineering Group LLC. This is in relationship to the 2021 MFT Design, Construction, Engineering, and Project Management for that program.
Thank you much, very much, Administrator Stonich. Looking for a motion to approve Resolution 2020-87, please.
So moved, Trustee Hendricks.
Thank you, Trustee Hendricks, in a second, please.
Second, Trustee Crusek.
Thank you, Trustee Crusek. Any discussion on this item? Seeing no one, if our clerk would please call the roll.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Trustee Crusek.
Aye.
Trustee Page.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Blair.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Last item this evening is item G. It's Resolution 2020-88. It's a resolution authorizing the creation of a restaurant financial relief rebate and grant program, consistent with the direction provided by the board at the October 27, 2020 study session, the cost not to exceed $350,000 plus the cost of administration of the grant program. And I believe, Mayor, you had some remarks you wanted to make?
Yes, I do. And then we'll go ahead and ask for a motion, but before our board vote this evening, I did want to briefly touch on this agenda item for the benefit of our public and our valued restaurants and bar owners, breweries, et cetera. It goes without saying that the pandemic's impact to our national and local economies has been far reaching, and we know that the hospitality industry has been particularly hit hard since the beginning. And one of our larger segments in our business industry here in Woodridge is our hospitality industry. It plays an important role in our Woodridge economy, and they are a vital contributor to our community's overall quality of life. We, and we know this since March, have watched our restaurants had to close and reopen under very strained conditions. And as I said, this has been since March, so we know it's been hard hitting. Thankfully, our outdoor dining that was permitted this summer offered a critical economic lifeline to many of our restaurants and bars and allowed to operate more viably, albeit still under ongoing capacity restrictions. With the governor's recent announcement of the Phase 3 enhanced public health mitigations, our restaurants and bars are again facing indoor dining restrictions. What is deeply concerning is that with the winter months approaching and the COVID positive cases beginning to rise again, many of our restaurants and bars that we've come to love and enjoy here in Woodridge may be unable to survive financially under the weight of this indoor dining restriction. For this reason, I cannot overstate the importance of supporting our restaurants and bars. For those that have the means to do so, I encourage and ask you to please consider ordering takeout, purchasing gift cards from your favorite local establishments. Their continued existence in our community may very well depend upon it. This has become an economic crisis that our restaurant and bars are facing again. The village trustees and I have made it our immediate priority to focus on exploring ways that the village can leverage some of the Federal Cares Act dollars to help provide some immediate financial relief to our restaurant and bars. After reviewing and discussing options for the last few weeks, I am very proud and thankful that tonight we will be voting on our restaurant financial relief grant program. The board and I are hopeful that coupled with other federal, state, and county financial relief programs, the village's grant relief will help some of our restaurants and bars, we're hoping all of our restaurant and bars, that they are going to be able to remain financially vibrant and viable during a challenging winter season ahead. The village will be receiving $1.7 million in Federal Cares Act economic stimulus monies via DuPage County. And this evening, that is the vote that we are taking. It is before us, and the resolution, which I'm going to ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2020-88, which would authorize the creation of a restaurant financial relief rebate and grant program. So I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved, Trustee Martinez.
Thank you, Trustee Martinez, in a second, please.
Second, Trustee Blair.
Thank you, Trustee Blair. Any further discussion on this item?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, please, Trustee Crusek.
I just wanted to thank the entire staff for all the work that they have done since this pandemic started, way back at the beginning, going through, coming up with the outdoor dining permitting, permitting process and how quickly that was done, now coming up with these options as quickly as they have been able to do it. Because as trustees, it's nice that we're able to vote on it, but we depend on the staff to be able to put this stuff together, and I think they've done a very good job under very difficult circumstances.
Thank you, Trustee Crusek. Any further discussion on this item? If our clerk would please call the roll.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Trustee Crusek.
Aye.
Trustee Page.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Blair.
Aye.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Thank you very much. And in closing, to our Woodridge neighbors, please continue to take good care and stay safe. We thank everyone for following the CDC guidelines of wearing your mask, washing your hands frequently throughout the day, staying socially distanced, that six-foot distancing. Also, please do take good care and takeout. Don't forget to dine and shop Woodridge and check on your neighbors. Again, as Trustee Crusek has stated, our thanks to our entire village team under the leadership of our administrator, Administrator Stonich. Thank you for all the excellent works in very trying times, along with the entire management team and each and every colleague at the village. We thank you all very much for just doing outstanding work on behalf of all of us, all of our residents and our businesses. We thank you all tremendously. There is just not enough words to say how much we appreciate all that you do for us. But thank you sincerely, everyone, and if there is nothing further to come before the village board this evening, going to ask for a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved, Trustee Hendricks.
Thank you, Trustee Hendricks, in a second, please.
Second, Trustee Crusek.
Thank you, Trustee Crusek. All those in favor, please sign aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are adjourned. It is 7:40 PM. We thank everyone. Please take.